I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we're going to 2.0 the agenda report. I don't know if anybody thinks about the change. And why don't we start by going to the meeting?
I have to change it.
Well, we kind of have an update or like a little bit of a work session on our OSBA meeting, winter conference, just feedback or anything?
Yeah.
Not right this month, so you'll do it during? I agree, okay. For all of us to share in general.
Lucy, Lucy, sure.
Sure. All right. And then we need... And it says...
I'll say it.
Okay, and then we can second to accept the agenda statement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is 3.0, visitors to address the board. This time period is for comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action but will refer concerns to Secret Ten and ask that we turn the report to the board. Do you have anybody here that's speaking all on the darn thing there? Who discussed?
Oh, we have Jessica.
I know.
To have your resource as...
Okay, all right. We'll make sure I'm not skipping out on some of these. Okay, well then we'll watch 4.0, the consent agenda statement.
I will make questions for you if they do have comments.
I'll say it.
Okay, so we can second to accept the consent agenda statement. I'll put your actions.
Now, I didn't, he just wasn't, they didn't put any feedback in there on the high school one, where, so I don't know if it was an oversight in the chat. I didn't select any of it that they'd be using as educational.
Your time's up again.
Edu, um, he. Page. Not a page, but background affected after news, which evidence things educational and social marketing materials could be using. So, like essentially they're not going to have any education materials while they're doing their part. But the elementary schools did have several types.
So, question.
I want to definitely during the better application. Or we can follow up. This was the, this was actually the, the application. So, I would imagine. It was like an early through the application process.
So, you saw it right there. But then he didn't miss all of them.
I can follow up.
All right, so very, very, uh, sweet on that. Then we can second to accept the consent agenda statement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so we have 5.0, new messages. And 5.1, a third take home from 502.
Good. Few items. Tara, who item 5.1, I do, uh, not 5.1. Um, she's going back to back. During this, I come here and so her first meeting started like, so I talked to Sherri Killins and we'll be joining a little bit out of order as she's coming up. Um, but the first item is the budget committee calendar. And in the packet, there were two options. So, um, option. Okay, the yellow color, that is the actual name of it, the cream. The budget with the yellow highlights. This is a variation of, right? This is actually an alternative to what we did last year. I'm sure you might recall, we met at the beginning of May and the end of May, because at the time of the calendar approval, there was still some plans to maintain that for planning session, which was held this month. Um, I believe that meeting was eventually cited that it wasn't needed. And so this calendar assumes that perhaps that meeting won't occur so that we can do our first budget meeting on Wednesday, May 15th, and then resume that normal every two week schedule, which we've done in prior years. So, again, first board meeting on May 15th, second on May 29th, and then the third meeting, third is needed. That would actually be the next Tuesday, because that cornea is Wednesday, you mean on 25th. So, that's, I was going to say alternate yellow. And then the calendar, the blue highlights is more so a roll forward of last year, where it assumes you'll hold the May 19th, make a planning session. So we'll have our first budget meeting, then first our second budget meeting at the end of the month. And then we have the meeting approval and post calendar. So, um, those are really the 23, the 400 night budget. So, two options. You guys, that action will want to discuss, and then the one will need to be identified to move forward with.
Did you have a notice of budget?
Um, I think there is response that you wouldn't have needed. Yeah, but, um, so depending on the first day of the meeting, the hosting dates have been updated. So we meet on May 1st, we get to host it, and then on May 24th. And if we meet on May 15th, they don't need to host until the meeting. So you adjust the publication deadlines based on the, from the first meeting. That's 5.1.
Obviously discussed.
Aye.
I keep my comments in.
Okay. It's over. I was going to say, is there a way to name that, or will we make people, we all know? It's also very, we're just trying to be careful.
Second item is our notice of budget committee vacancies. So, we have three openings, two of which are pre-existing. Obviously, we had, or maybe not obviously, we had some high school students who served and have since moved out of district and resigned with their positions. So, those two seats would be refilled with two-year remaining appointment, and then position four recycleable, and that will be available for a full three-year season. So, I'm proposing an application day of Wednesday, or, all right, appointment date of Wednesday, March 13th, but application closing on March 1st. So, here's 5.2. And then 5.1, three. Uh, so, when I started with the district, um, we had a recommendation from a prior year audit about improving our student body bookkeeping practices. And we have been tearing that full implementation. So, to clarify, all of our student body activities have always been reported in the financial statements, but the, the bookkeeping itself was actually happening at each school. Um, for example, our elementary schools were using pretty simple Excel ledgers to, and they were all completing bank reconciliations, but they were using Excel ledgers to record their donations and checks and record funds. Our middle school and high school were using QuickBooks. And so what was happening is they would quarterly provide, well, monthly they provide their financial information and quarterly we would consolidate it into the accounting system. Over the years, we have closed the physical bank accounts, but maintained the accounting system. And that accounting has now moved to the business office. So we're now making those deposits and preparing the checks and reconciling the bank statement. The very last account is Plymouth High School. And while the other schools all made debt, Emo or they did the West, Plymouth did that Inroads, and Inroads is requesting the board action to close the bank account, of which the fund balance will just change banks. The same amount of money is still incorporated in the financial statements. And that has been recorded under Fund 205. So, ASC funds have a specific designation and actually have special audit procedures, because these should be student-led and generated, like accounts the students should be having in a way under, like advisors. Um, they should really have a say in how those funds are used. So, that is why, especially those financial statements are segregated at the, um, a specific amount reserved for student body activities.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I just kind of farted and feel like you're, you're also talking about making ones. Is there anything else that we can add?
Yeah, the Bank of the West accounts, because they were at Bank of the West and I was already the master signer on those accounts. We, as we consolidated all of, like, actual bookkeeping, those accounts have had, been closed and the funds have been transferred. We used to have like 12 Bank of the West accounts. Each school had their own small account that they were writing checks from and depositing funds to.
Okay, so just like the religion, I keep noticing that is branding me every time I go by them now. Do you have any idea what it is? Are we going to change things every single time I go by and change this thing?
Um, no, because when the...
What initial stand for?
The Montreal.
Is that what it is?
Um, no, because they assumed the SWIFT and the ADA numbers. And so, um, we didn't have, we did reoff, we did a four resolution in September, I think, to recognize the bank's name, but in terms of like the federal clearinghouse and like FDIC, we didn't have to, like, I didn't have to resign any cards.
So they don't need to split?
Right.
Gymnastics thing.
It flipped and some resulted in...
Switch to a melody and say, okay.
We were very thankful for that, because we were, we actually do a lot of electronic payments for security, and we were really worried, we were going to have to contact, like, all of our people servicers and change all of those routing numbers within a seven-day period, and we didn't have...
Yeah, and I knew that we did that, but I couldn't expect to, like, I would have Facebook while I drove down the highway, and it's all initials for everything, and they keep changing it. And I can't even keep track of that one whatsoever. And I don't know what the name of this is, right? So, anyway, so I just, for that...
I'm trying to buy VI, I think, and I don't know.
I know, yeah.
Who you?
Well, I guess, anyway, so yeah, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm assuming they haven't heard from Tara yet, right? I think I'm, I'll, should I be waiting for her instead of her?
Okay, she's logging in now. Well, that's a, well, that's perfect timing.
Good thing I asked that question. Yeah, I was just expecting it to be the main, and, or it's an initial.
Yeah, because everything we like augmente is BMO, so, yeah.
So, here is Tara.
Good evening, and I can hear you, can you hear me?
Sure can now. Perfect timing.
Oh, wow, that's awesome. Well, thank you very much, Board of Directors, for having me. My name is Tara Camp, and I am a partner with Paulie Rogers and Company, and we are the financial statement auditors for the district. So I'm here this evening to present the results of the June 30, 2023 financial statement audit. And what I'll do is go over the governing body letter that is issued with the audit, and that's a nice little letter that summarizes everything we're required to communicate with you. So the purpose of the audit for the district is threefold. We perform the financial statement audit, where we test and assess the financial statement and accounting information presented by management to determine if it's fairly stated. Secondly, we perform the Oregon Minimum Standards Compliance Audit, where we're looking at various laws and regulations to ensure compliance with state laws. And lastly, we perform the federal single audit, where we are testing compliance with different federal grants on a yearly basis, because there's a lot of strings attached to those federal grants, and so we test compliance with those. One moment. And the, so I'll go over the results of the audit. The results for the audit for the school district are excellent. For the financial statement audit, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion with no reservation, so it's exactly what you want. For state minimum standards, we found no exceptions or issues requiring comment. And for federal awards, we found no issues of non-compliance and no question costs. And lastly, we had no management letter issued. If there were items that came up in our audit that were significant and the board needed to hear about it, we would address that in a management letter. So overall, excellent results. We also note that the district implemented a new accounting standard for June 30, 2023, called GASP96, and that is an accounting standard that dramatically changed the way subscription-based information technology arrangements or software and other IT items are accounted for. It was a massive undertaking by the district and required a lot of extra work and a lot of extra hours. It was very difficult for everybody in the governmental world, and the district did an excellent job implementing that for the first year. We had no difficulties in performing and completing our audit. The staff is wonderful to work with. Jessica's an excellent business manager. Um, the work is highly professional and efficient, and they get everything to us in a timely manner. It is a massive job to have an audit completed. And it was completed on time, issued on time, and submitted on time, so that's commendable. We had no disagreements with management over accounting and auditing issues. And lastly, in our letter, we cover future accounting and auditing issues coming out. Every year, there's new standards that have to be reviewed to see if they're applied to the district. And thankfully, there's nothing in the very near future as big as the GASP96 that was just implemented, but there are little minor changes. So we'll always communicate with the district to be aware of what's coming so that they can be prepared for those. So overall, excellent results for the district, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Can you give us one thing that Jessica could work on?
Sure.
Unfortunately.
Jessica's excellent.
Yeah, yes, thank you. You did a great job. And you're not going to try and steal or anything, right? Trying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Thanks so much, Tara.
Thanks for squeezing us in between everybody else.
Oh, no problem, it's my pleasure. Um, if anything else comes up, please let me know, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tara.
Okay.
She doesn't, I think if you find that number 100, it would be okay. All right, and then we're going to go on to 5.3, to the OSBA Annual Conference Report.
I probably want to stand for this, so I can actually see what I've been doing.
All right, great slideshow for it. So, our OSBA. That's your, sure my, sure my piece.
I'm at the point. I don't want to be transported anymore.
Me either. I'm sitting all day and losing the stamina a little bit. I keep those muscles going for sweating. Okay, that's by, that's by his house, that's a great place. That cooperating? I think Scott put your term out a little bit. Okay, got it. Got that? Yay! Can you leave here? Sorry. All right, so we have our Oregon Tool Board Association from November 21st, 2023. And it was, we actually went to November 7th, 11th, or at least I went. And... Okay, no, okay.
Just going to back for you.
Cool, yeah. So, our conference speakers, we have Adolf Brown and Trudy Man. Um, Adolf Brown is an author, keynote speaker, and much, much more. Um, he offers some of the most uniquely inspiring and yet profoundly challenging master thoughts in communications around, I know he challenged me. And then Suriya, she is a communication expert, keynote and motivational speaker, and she works with audiences to teach them how to stay positive and work together better. So Adolf Brown, he gave his presentation on love, light, and insight. So some of my biggest takeaways were about him talking about bringing love and light to our schools and districts, and some of the ways he talked about that were looking versus seeing someone. And he said that when you're looking at someone, all it takes is brains and eyes. But in order to see someone, it takes your brain, your eyes, and your heart. And he was trying to challenge us to, okay, how, how well can you actually see someone? Are you actually looking into your heart? Then he talked about your smile, your personality, and your impression. So he said, your smile is your logo, your personality is your business card, and the impression that you leave someone with is your trademark. That stuck with me. So I was like, well, I want people to know my logo as my smile, not my crowd. So I want to work on the, what you're doing. Uh, another big thing was everyone have a backpack. So he gave us a challenge of every day, looking at what you have in your backpack. What are all the things that you're bottling up inside that we're not letting out? Um, all of us, every day, should be taking all those things out, running through them, saying, okay, what's affecting me, what's pulling me back, maybe what's actually pushing me forward that I should keep in my backpack? Like he said, everyone have a backpack that you can't see into. And so when there are people hurting us, it's just because they haven't taken the time to look through their backpack, and have someone help them work through it. And so his challenge was to us, we have wounds, we have hurts, and if we don't empty our backpack, then it's leading one of the ones who needs us. So it's really important for us to take that time and look through our inventory and say, okay, what do, what do I need to take out of my backpack today? And then one of the coolest things I thought was his three, employed, enrolled, and enlisted. And he said. All three made of our country. Not everyone has to be enrolled in college. Not everyone has to be employed by that third whole school. Not everyone has to be enlisted, but all three are even for the country. Then we have our second speaker, Suriya Mayman. She spoke on November 11th, and she talked about conflict resolution in the North Face. So one of her biggest takeaways was, say what you mean, mean what you say, but don't say it. And I definitely have had to work on that, if I like, with my symptoms. But she also gave a really good insight into, to the opinion options. So when someone asks for your opinion on something, there's oftentimes a reason behind it. Typically, it's because they want a chance for themselves to write. They don't always want to hear your opinion, but rather, like, okay, well, now actually, I want to tell you. So her three choices were the non-response, just don't respond, say, like, you know, I'm not really sure, but I don't really have a, I don't really have an opinion about that, or throwback. So if it seems like they're itching to say what they want to say, well, I really have an opinion. What about you? And just let them get out of your system? Or number three, focus on the positive. If, maybe, I'll use an example, there's been times where with school dances, there are always a really bad stuff, and people will ask for opinions, and it's really easy to want to say, oh, this was awful, or that was the worst thing ever. But really, we, I try to focus on someone asks me about how I accept it, but, well, I wouldn't like this aspect. I think we did really good in that aspect, like, that part of the, part of the data sort of assembly. And so by focusing on the positive, it just reinforces, okay, let's try and look through the, 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 that. And then we had break out. So the ones that I attended were the Youth Advisory Council and the Student Voice in Your School District. So the first one was a Q and A. It was led by the youth of the council. And they mostly just talked about their experiences and what YAP is. Um, they shared where they're at and where they want to go, or where they are going. It was pretty cool. It was kind of hard to interact with, though, because it was mostly just them sharing their experience, which brings me to the next one, which is Student Voice in Your School District, which is more of a panel info session. So starting with Rob Gladius, he is amazing. Uh, I go to OASC every year for student councils, and he's always there. He's incredible. And he started with a little bit of an info session, talking about student voice. And one of the most, uh, probably the biggest thing that he said is to, like, look at the difference between an open door versus an empty office. Oftentimes, adults and principals, vice principals, any sort of admin, they say, oh, the door's always open. But that actually scares students off, is what he would say, for those who aren't as prone to taking information. So he said, instead of just saying the door's open, get out of the office and go find those students and ask them, so you can put our set of the door. Um, then he also said to be transparent, build relationships. So just, they're making it awkward, they're trying to hide, hide between the lines. Just be open, be transparent, because that's what kids can act with the most. They talk to, most kids, they're, especially the ones that are really honest. So, it's, they interact better, they're drawn, they're colorful, it's around what they're saying. Um, and then he comes to the panel, so. This was actually, this was really fun. So he had two students from different high schools in Oregon, and they were both student representatives on the board. And so I was talking to Miles, and I was like, yeah, I'm a student representative. So he was like, do you want to join? So I ended up joining on the panel, which was super cool. And then there was another kid who also wanted to join me. So what turned, what's supposed to be two students talking about their experience was four students talking about their experiences of, or completely different school districts. So we got to do like comparing and tracking, not just two, but a bunch of different schools and seeing, okay, how are things run differently? And take a look at where each of us wanted to take what we learned while being on the school, which was super cool. And this was my favorite quote from Doc Brown. They're serving as the need you leadership is above you. And I actually use this today. I'm leading a leadership class at the middle school. And I was telling them, well, you guys are, you're, you're cleaning the sand, which is a lot of fun, but there are many moments where you have to think, okay, what might be the server? During the dance, there's punch, if there's snacks, if there's mess being made. You have to be willing to take the time to clean it up, especially after the dance. So that's what I told them, I was like, you guys are serving as the need you leadership is. For other than the love, you're never going to change, um, because it takes a server to me. So, that is what I have, uh, what I got from OSBA. And so thank you for having me.
Read that, read it, come on. So, think this is a great kind of matter. Share thoughts or learnings, or links?
I think I had a couple. One that comes to mind is still the homework reading policy for the district. Something that brought up during session a couple times, we said, if you don't have one, you should have one, or check them out. So if we could get a couple, we'll be able to district one. And maybe just see if it's something that...
And maybe just see if it's something that would benefit us. I was kind of wondering if your thought from what actually. I know particularly at the high school, those teachers are doing it different. And how it affected my students this year, but I didn't really know it was a thing until I went to that conference.
Yeah, and like, I would say one of the biggest things is the department. Like, each department is supposed to be set on a grading system, but the problem is that so, they don't always do that. So in some departments, like each teacher creates different labels in the department, but that's fine. And then some are like, you know, we're all moving the same. So I, it's kind of all over the place. And I know like with different, students with different teachers are like, I can't scan the way the grade. I prefer this teacher because how one grades might wrap the GPA of the student that, like was born by the curve of another student. And another is doing perfectly fine because the teacher isn't very biased or whatever. So it's, it's kind of all over the place. I haven't experienced any problems, but that's because. Which doesn't really help the others, so. Yeah, but I would definitely say it's, I know like some, like some of my friends are just, they get so frustrated because they're like, I just wish they would all like do the same thing. Instead of us having like pick and choose, like guess which way is the, yeah, I can be pretty difficult.
In ratings, we do that. First blush, well, it's easy just. I eat eighty, I'd say at level. But then you start talking about, what about Mr. Predator, Mr. Predator? Not, we're all, we're all pleased. And attendance. Yes, and it's work. Do your other pieces, like if there's a missing assignment or you get F on assignment, you get zero, or you get a fifty percent. Because, right, if you have a zero, you get an A, you add it together, that's. So that can skew ratings as well. So looking at how, how we approach that. We can do, but it's complicated. But I would. Yeah, it's too much to model.
And do you remember anything off the top of your head?
I remember.
Yeah.
I do. I remember this early childhood program that district presented on. Very exciting. Presenting the children's institute. Which was very reinforcing for me as a district leader here in Oregon. Eager to try to understand what we're going to do, why, and I did, how they start repertory. It was a weird thing. Danny did a great job. Yeah, lots of team to see our preschool programs expand. Kind of all based on, right, it's easier to catch somebody if they're, if they're two years old and they're a year behind. And just have one year to make up their way to go there in eighth grade and then die. Eight years, so we gotta catch them. I had not at all. This is a comment that I did. I'm glad I'm glad to hear the, the wisdom. You know, really progressive. I like to see him speak some more. He did pretty good.
Yeah, I'd love to ring for everybody here.
Yeah, I would too. Well, maybe there's something that we. Well, we've got things like that. Or bring Ian as a speaker, the biggest character that happens to stay around.
It would be great school.
Yeah.
I think the last time I remembered that, actually, was the two times I remember it was Brad Colsey. Okay, I'm. School, I gave a kid off drugs, and his daughter and my daughter became ten thousand, so I've been. Hope that's. The other one, of course, was our, I love you guys. Being no for two to begin, but. Worth while to bring somebody up that, truthfully, if you're going to bring it in for student body or daytime, then. We could almost do a three-shot deal where it was in student body at the high school. And because that was a generation you can communicate with, well, then all faculty after school. Or if you need in the evening, or maybe just faculty in the evening together. But the evening, you're, you're really missing if you don't include the community and that kind of speaker. The trick is getting people there because they're very busy at these schools that. I think they probably won't get that. It would help us towards our strategic plan and mission that we have. So I have, you're that's been true. Of the hospitals and the neighbors.
I would say one of the things that I told Scott and I started the conference, that it was so exciting to get to see something of ours, was one of the topics, instead of we're always want to. And I can remember for years, all of us, I didn't know before, saying, but where are you doing that? Or ours is better than what they're even saying. Or they only just started and it's really cool, but we've been doing it for eight years, you know, that kind of thing. And so I told him at the conference that I would love to have us work to the point that we are where they want to come for the conference. And we have everybody ready and we put a whole one together with all of the things that we do. And have it be not just one topic, but all the things that we're doing. From even passing bond measures right down to our wonderful wood job classes, to our auto, to our everything that we've got, is being able to have all kinds of those beauty parts and everything else to come for us to be able to be in the circuit of service.
You know, you mentioned that, but we have Jill Maughey presenting from the country on CTE. Oh, Stacy Mendoza is presenting for OSBA on communications and passing problems. We had three teachers, gosh, pre-pandemic, we were doing a workaround assessment literacy that presented a couple times around the state. I think in Vancouver, you see, so we get out there, I just don't know.
Yeah, but I just want to be seen, healthy, 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 for a whole weekend.
So, so one of the things I observed in particular, I mean, in response to that, I think that's wonderful. We also, I think districts need to understand the kinds of leadership that we're doing within the community with our first responders meetings and our faith-based, those kinds of things. And that might make it, we can say, well, sure, breakout. And get some of those partners to join us potentially. And say what, how that's impacted there through our school district. If we had a faith-based member on that first one that I heard. And a little, one of the thirty-minute panels and share what impact that's had on overall. I, I think, I'm going to spend a little more time this time and actually in this summer with great kids. At our, our representative on OSBA. And kids are kids, I think you pronounce the kids, so I'll. He's a, he's a pretty. Interesting individual, very insightful, and he's a real benefit to, to our school districts and the school districts. In his region, he has served long and well, and I think that in the community, take note, but he does. So, that's just my state.
I think I have gotten to the point with some of the conferences, that I would agree that I'd like to bring it in to us and maybe tailor it more to us. And maybe we've faced many of our. Sort of campaigning all the women, at least for a time or two, or every other or something.
So I have to hear first one, your, your third one, or your fourth one?
I'm going to say.
I think you shared a few good words.
I tried to go to any of the ones that I don't know and think, I want to find one thing in here that I didn't know, or that I want to take back home with us.
Yeah, too much of the.
There's something I think, oh, you see, on the one part of towards the beginning, you talked about the smile, there was two other parts of that one category.
Your smile is your logo, your personality is your trademark, and the impression you leave is your, oh wait, no. Your personality is your business card, and your impression is your trademark.
What was really interesting is right after, you know, she was right, no point in doing stuff, I mean, we have to, it was awesome.
I have a little.
No, she was great. Anyway, so what was interesting, so I want you guys all to picture, this is like, we're only talking days after that. I mean, the following week, okay? And, and you know how I'm all over at McBride doing this flagging every morning, right? So I'm standing on the sidewalk, and I want you to remember in your mind, is that the sun's moving as you're going into the fall. And it's coming up later, later, right? So I'm at the sidewalk and I'm flagging, and I've been doing this for two and a half months, right? And then this one guy stops, like, fall on Wednesday, and he asks our principal, she's always like, she's always looking at me. And, and it's, no, she's right. And, and she came over and she said she looked at me and I was like, what am I doing? Because the sun is there now. And so, but that's what that guy's impression of me was, I was like, you know, looking like, oh, I'm not even. It was, I, it's like, I don't even know what I'm doing wrong. And I'm smiling, but yeah, trying to see something. I hate sunglasses because I always feel like that's hiding the person, you know? But I said, I think next year of October, November, I'm going to be wearing sunglasses. I didn't realize I was not looking too really nice. Alright, well then let's go on to our super agenda report from Mr. Scott.
Yeah, this is the one thing I've been waiting for, right, friend, to make some decisions on. Let's see, start and end times. And so I've gathered some documents. We have Durham. And we, we thought we were going to get just our local Durham folks who did a great job for us. But we ended up getting the executive branch as well. They're here to support us.
Tell them when their parents are here.
So I do want to walk you through the documents. You guys are familiar, you've seen them. The first one is the, the Washington, the Washington, well, not the Washington. Well, about ESP. We had this presented to us in December. I think the comment about it's kind of the Golden Locks type. Because as you look through this, the, the elementary school parents thought it was just right. But that was the one in the middle, the high school, the high school consensus was too early. And the ones after, I was, you know, too, too late. I think it's important to note, although it's statistically significant. And what was response, what the responders said, is a good representation of how our community feels. We also, I think, need to keep in mind the whole number of respondents. As the, the end, the start of the new year, we saw quite a few people and a few coming to board meetings, very concerned. Listen, we're trying to be responsive, but we didn't have as many folks then respond on the survey. That's not to say what the survey says is accurate. I think, though, it does give us a little bit of a feeling of the temperature of the community and how they feel towards the overall lesson. One of the most important things I believe to look at is near the very back of the document. The percentage of ranking extremely important. This, this one, this, like second to the back.
Right order, right group.
Student, student sleep schedule was number one across the board for family staff, I should students. Younger students walking the bus stop in the dark, students giving out time for the work schedule, which is a little bit counter to some of the other things that we heard from the high school one, where they wanted to come in later. But if they come in later, then that's just their, and they. But good information for us, so I want to make sure we have this. The other document, large document I have, is the transportation, operation, and review. This is the document that we used and went through to make sure that our routes were efficient. Came back and said, yeah, Durham's doing a great job for you. Good, good to hear. Thank you for that. And then he gave us some suggestions on bell times, with some alternatives that continue to use the practices that we're using to maximize buses. Double, double line routes. The next document that you have on here, this is something that we looked at when we made the initial shift. People together, bell times from multiple districts. We have Baker District, Lowent, which are a little smaller than us, but the larger districts like Port Public, Beaverton, the Astoria, and Skafus, which are very similar to our size, aside from our league schools. So that gives you an idea of where to bay land. Some of them, they have same drop-off time, partly due because they have elementary, middle, and high school on the same campus. But I, I think that does a nice job of letting us see what others are doing. And then this final document that looks like this. This was, Michelle gave this to us a year ago or so, you probably don't even remember. And it, and it's kind of given us some advice. So minutes needed, because that was a big thing, we're trying to, right, set the time. Minutes needed if you're going from elementary school and then the high school is about twenty-five minutes. High school, elementary is twenty-five, elementary, middle school, thirty-five, et cetera. And then as you go through, you kind of look, it makes the recommendation that high school, then middle school, or middle school to high school is the best scenario for us. So I wanted to make sure, quickly walk you through these, so we had these documents at hand for reference. And then really begin kind of talking about where we want our begin time and end time to land. And one of the reasons why we have Durham here is to let us know if it's reasonable. And we have had questions about, well, what about adding, musting, adding routes? You know, that's something that we can do, remember adding a route those in its best. So if we could avoid that, we want people, we want to do this right for kids, and we need to add a route. And that's what we need. Changing, and we changed for this year with a plan to do this. They come out this time, the finalized, either, yeah, we're going to keep this, or we're going to make some changes. We wanted to. One of the, a few of the goals that we have as the district is to avoid or limit elementary students walking in the dark or waiting at the bus stop in the dark. That was one of the goals for the change. We wanted to reduce the wait time, if supervision needed. One of the big issues that we had previously, and we're not hearing it now, is that the middle school, because we're so close of transportation, kids were waiting about forty minutes for the buses, which became a supervision issue for us. Kids who just need kids, it's, it's not that long. And then we also wanted to maximize collaboration and plan time for our elementary teachers in particular, but we want to do that for all staff. So I did, or we began kind of talking about numbers, and I could throw up a model that helped us look at what they, they look like when we have that required suit time built in. I did reach out to principals and said, you know, tell me how, how's the current bell schedule working? So at McBride, principal all of a sudden reported that they had a uptick. So at McBride, um, principal, um, all of a sudden reported that they had a uptick of some tardies. Um, and there's some difficulty in our community finding childcare after school. Um, but also noted that teachers are reporting a very clear benefit to having early release because it provides them with valuable time to work together. Let's see, my other, oh, Conny's, Conny's City School, um, our teen is out on leave right now, so didn't get her report back. Her, uh, Sharid reported that the turnaround of the dismissal times were working well for students, and that the bell schedule is working very well for teachers and wanting to collaborate and meet after school. Um, Chris at the middle school said, um, they're, they have about 25-minute wait time on average for buses. They said it's, it's working okay, but with the way the schedule is, they don't have much time at the end of the day for meetings, and that's traditionally what parents want to meet, so they've had to shift those meetings to the morning, which has been a little bit of a challenge. He said the schedule's unsustainable, but not ideal, it's working for them. Like, if they had the rest, I think, like, at all our schools, they'd better have, excuse me, time at the end of the day. Um, our high schools all reported, it worked, and it didn't really have much more to add. So that's everything as far as my data. You have data, and you have community feedback that you receive from meetings and just through the documents. So my thinking.
You have actual tardy data?
I don't have the current part of it.
There goes a lot. I think, right, there's a lot of everyone, yeah, doesn't matter. You know, we tell tale of what the schools are actually going through as well.
According to, um, Frye, he said they average about 20, 20 students tardy, and they're looking more at about 20 students tardy a day, three and 40 per day.
When I'm there flagging, I usually stay there, I make sure that the last kid has gotten in. The parents will just drop them, the doors are shut at eight o'clock. And then you very rarely ever get out there until eight twenty, that's coming, or coming, like, straight after that whole time period. Or very last minute, like, 7:59, and they're trying to rush up, because they're late, so. And actually, she doesn't even count those ones, they keep that door, and so I say, "Get in that door before the bell rings." They aren't having to win, so that's not counting those that still are actually late. They just made it in the door, is, there's usually 10, 20 of them doing that right at 7:59. On that one little topic, though, I brought it up to you before, too. I don't know how much we have at the other, our mentions, but one of the things that has, um, became an issue at McBride that I've noticed is that we do have parents who do need to meet the teacher with the child to hand them over to them, and they have nowhere close by to park at all. Um, and so if they get in the drop-off line, they now filled off, hold their, they're in their drop-off line, while they get out and help to unseat belt their child and hand them directly over to a certain staff member, a whoever that that child needs to go to. Um, and so one of the things that I suggested is, Scott, is, I noticed at McBride at least, and I bet we could pull it off if we needed it, the other elementaries, too, is in the same area that the handicap parking is, there's grass on both sides, having posts that I believe that we could put four parking spots over here that are for parents needing teachers, for them to pull in over there, and that gives them a, a spot to pull off and be out of the way and not have to try to leave out the kids in the car while they personally hand their child over to a teacher. Because some of our kids are, you know, need that every single day and every morning. So I know that that sometimes is that holding up a whole line, or that child is late, we're trying to match them up with their, any of their teachers. Anyway, so that's just a solution for part of it that I've noticed, but otherwise, um, I, I feel like that everybody's doing the best they can to get out, it's just a little crazy there. So I know that most of the parking staff was the same crazy, and I'm not sure how bad that is for your best drivers, but I know that at least the ones at McBride have a big place to go way away from them helps 100%. Well, we'll say maybe 5%, and we're going to get a little bit of this, but as long as a parent has a perfect life.
Can you tell us the actual points, what they are? We're questioning whether they're accurate.
Are these ones? Are you not a professor? Because mine are wrong.
Are they really the same times or something? I know that, uh, also starts at nine.
Yeah, and then here it says the lunch starts at eight, but then on the parents eight thirty, but they're drinking. And, uh, current dollars to this. And I thought, I thought the middle school brought out that food's wrong.
Because that's 3:00 AM in town. It's like, even if you're thirty, right? I did notice that a lot of the schools, I wanted to list them, very, very close times to us, except for class, where you step loose. And I think they need to move up just so that they don't have all of our parents trying to drive through their town at the same time they're trying to drop off their kids. Let's get them on work all at the same time, get them out. So Michelle, if, if you guys actually added a bus that followed directly behind what picks up elementary, should be picking up the middle school, old, to keep them on almost the same time schedule as everybody else, how many buses would it take?
Do you want to write onto the table?
Sure, if you want to, whatever.
Absolutely.
Write a chair and, can you think about how many that would be?
I told you that was a class.
You go full regular.
Yeah, I'm pulling up, you got a bit of a secret. One, but, so we get to make that mistake.
And I've, I've kind of wondered that, sure, the whole time when we were doing this, is that, you know, instead of putting the middle schoolers late, even though we all think that they need to sleep in, so they won't be so crabby. But if we did try to do it for parents or whatever, is to get them all pretty much on the same schedule, I can pull, you can fit them all in the buses. So it's kind of, and I, even around, never I'm not asking for that, but how many more buses would it, or else it'd take? Just basically, you have the same.
So if we're talking about, um, starting and releasing each school at the same time?
Approximately, and they need to drop off either high school or elementary, but yeah.
So, um, that would, currently, that would entail, I mean, probably better than 20 routes. Something like that. There's, there's other things that go along with that, that, that Will has more detail on. But, yeah, so we, we minimally, I'm looking at probably adding 25 routes.
And 25 routes, and just 25 buses?
25 buses.
25, probably. And spare factor around 20, 20, or 10% to that, probably another two buses or so. So you're looking at 25 additional routes for that, because you're essentially doubling service at that point. And then you're already factoring in the prices and other two buses on top of that to making a, a spare, that's a ratio.
The one thing that I think is really important to remember, by adding buses, our neighbors in the south, uh, weren't able to have a bus ride last, and ended up moving to a rolling route system where some bus routes were serviced one weekend, and then the next weekend. Um, so we could purchase, or you can put a contract at buses, but the reality is, just like every industry, there's a shortage of, yeah, staffing.
Well, and, and in order to get that kind of equipment, at this point in time, it's not possible.
So I can speak to your timeframe a little bit, like, um, if you're, say, we're adding 25 buses, um, the lead time currently on, on, on school buses is anywhere from nine to 12. So if we were to add 25 buses, if we were to say that at five routes, we could probably pull from Washington, some older spares, assuming that the school district would be working well, that's a fleet age for a temporary basis. And we could probably pull up, like, six more routes in, in a shorter order. If we're talking about 25, 20, 25, 15, that, that's a nine to 12 monthly time on the equipment, um, to, to do that.
Washington buses was one of the challenges for us, and.
We would retrofit, maybe not Washington, you could, Idaho has Krigley and standards to where we could retrofit to, or inspect. It's challenging, but that's easier a lot than pull 15, 20, 25 buses.
Well, and I want you personally, is, mainly is my asset, it's not because I want to push that, because I know. But I, but I also understand that you guys are in the same, like you was talking about in power. The same predicament is that daycare was having, when we weren't getting out of school till three, and kids pretty much weren't arriving till 3:15 to 3:30, is they couldn't keep staff because they were only going to get to work maybe a two-hour window. So you guys are in that same situation with buses. If I tell you, "I want everybody picked up in an hour's time and dropped off," and who wants to work for you for maybe two hours? So I totally get how that works. Same thing, doing daycare myself forever, is to get that backup person. I feel that not only is the 2:30 time better for the elementary, is getting out for everybody from the staff, but that there's another reason, is during the year that we made it be later and be that 3 o'clock time, is when Monkey Tree completely shut down their school program, because they couldn't get staff either for kids to maybe come for an hour, hour and a half. By the time they got on the staff, it, it was time for them being picked up. And so it has improved for everybody from the after-school, and people have started wanting to even be that after-school program or childcare, because they got at least three hours now worth of kids before they get picked up by mom and dad, instead of one hour by the time they did. So it's amazing what that half hour, 45 minutes does, but it does make your employees have more work time, like between both morning and afternoon, there's a little break in there sometimes for some of them. Otherwise, we try to keep them busy, you know, fill trips as much as we can, right? So anyway, so I totally understand the dynamics of it, I think, trying to figure out a way to maybe make the parents understand that, too. But you can't just pick up everybody in 30 minutes and drop them because you want them to be there at your time. And then that perfect time for the parent at 7:30 is not necessarily the perfect time for the parent. But then, or like I said, 9 o'clock drop-off over at the middle school, right? So. But anyway, just wanted to bring that up because I know that that does make a difference, reviews as much as it did for the childcare and the after-school program.
It does, yeah, it's a huge difference. Our drivers, at, at, at this current time, are fitting, um, anywhere between four and upwards of five hours a day. So if we did this kind of scenario, they're looking at hour, max, hour and a half.
Hour and a half, yeah.
Yeah, for each shift. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Retain hands or require.
Okay, so they could go down the street and work for those guys and get more hours, right?
Exactly, yeah.
So behind you, um, that's the same bell schedules, 7:45, 2:45, I believe that's what's reflected in the document. Middle school bell schedule goes from 9:49 to 3:30, and I believe that's what we have.
Maybe just that longer.
Arms says 8:30 to 3:00.
Okay.
Isn't it 2:15 or something?
It is, it's 2:15.
2:15, or you've been 3:20 at the middle school. And so those ones are off.
That's good.
So we all got a point, okay, we know kind of where it is.
That's not what's published on the website. Well, and we're picking up early, because this is what's in recorded for instructional hours. All right, so I can, I've gotten pretty proficient at changing these, uh, equations, so these are instructional hours that we like to stay to. We have a little bit of flex between 6.5, 6.5, and 7, but that's what we had, and that's at our minimum. Um, that's a little bit of flex time. But I've set this up so we can change the number here in green. Um, so if we want to talk about having the elementary start at 7:45, or we'll change everything in the spreadsheet, and I believe that keeps, I did my best to keep the recommendation that Michelle gave us as far as the spread time. And one of the important things to have Michelle there is that she can look, look at that, say, "Yeah, that one still works," or, uh, that, that doesn't work, you need to make some adjustments, you know, a little longer, a little shorter. So what I'd like to do is kind of use this, and I may need to make some adjustments I can, but it'll help us keep our instructional time in there, and also just look at where we're trying to go back through and recalculate. So with that, the first thing I think is important, where would you like your elementary to start?
Can you do, like, some parenting, um, working your sets? So knowing that we are from your town, um, our children, especially our youth, are going to be meeting a place while mom's at the door, that, about the girl, whatever. They're the ones we're concerned about, it's our youth. So my first question is, like, say we have an elementary school, start time at 8:50, what time does the bus pick them up?
Depends on where they live.
Also, so probably about a half an hour, so we know they might be starting, they might be taking that by 8:30, 8:60, 7:50, or 7:45.
So I, I, again, it depends on where they live. If they live on the top, at the top of pavement, they're going to be on the bus for an hour. Yeah.
But that's normal. Like, that's normal, right?
But if you're looking at in-town, 30 minutes.
Okay, so that we know that they're taken care of, even if we give them to a later time. And then high school and middle school sports have clearly said that they want early release times, uh, which is easier to have before or after care? After school, right? After? So the, the one scenario that I told with their times is high school at 7:55, middle school at 8:15, and elementary at 8:50.
Is the high school at what time?
7:55. The middle school at 8:15, and then the elementary at 8:50.
Yeah.
But that's according to your, so I didn't, like, pour into the current scenario, it's not as if they.
High school, 7:55?
Yeah, correct.
And then middle school at 8:15?
8:30.
And then? 8:15 for elementary, is that right?
Yes.
That's where you want coming, I know.
You're right, daycare, well.
After school, and it would select all parents who are now waiting for work, or they don't want to grab their high school or middle schoolers to watch their little guys in the room. Anyway.
They weren't watching them already, all the high schoolers are gone before that elementary.
I know, but the parents are able to drop their kids off and serve them to work that time with the earlier start time. And they are, if you don't get their kid dropped off until 8:40, you have the minimum, 8:30.
I stand right now, I leave my house at 7:15 to drop my kids off at the high school. Starting at 7:45. But then I say, I don't have that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, as a computer, essentially driving this, you're going to have a, a care drop-off of elementary students at 8:40. It's going to be like, it's like 8:50. It's gonna be like, it's like eight fifty start time in elementary, I'm dropping my kid off, um, I would be at twelve o'clock. Getting close to that.
I don't get this, I don't get to work on time right now.
What I'm saying, for that particular thing, it's a value added service I provide for children, but if.
Yeah, because they're high schoolers, so they could be right in the bus or they'll be driving.
That would actually, that's closer back to where we were, but the elementary would be difficult for parents to drop off their kids. If you're if you're wanting parents to drop off the most important set, the elementary has to start.
So that's where, again, it's like we're in state where we can actually provide before after school, you're going to do it with your elementary.
But I think that the childcare works better, I can write.
So, yeah, so by doing that, that is, but it's right back where we lose the after school daycare.
So so Britta does have a suggestion, if I may.
So this worked in the past and I have all of the hours, I just keep them because it's just changing things. In the past and it's worked and we've never had a complaint, having elementary at seven forty five, middle school at eight thirty and high school at eight forty. That mean middle school and high school are together, they should not be in elementary.
And that was seven forty five.
Seven forty five for elementary.
Eight five for middle school.
Eight twenty for high school and eight thirty for middle.
Eight thirty for middle school.
I would say as an elementary schooler without start time, I was not affected by this much. Because like I would go to bed earlier anyways, but in high school, I mean, I'm still getting to bed at like ten, ten thirty anyway this. But it's so much more ability on because of the workload difference.
Having, yeah, having four children and one, all of them in the schools, high school wise, the later the better. Because some sport practices don't come home until dinner and then they have to get down and then go to bed.
The the one concern with the three twenty and and I, we've had this for years.
We have had this, right?
The the challenge is, and we survive, but because we travel ways for sporting events, give this the last part of the period.
What we do now anyways, I mean, my son's soccer team needs it too. So it's, that is the reason it's changing.
Was that actually kind of like, it'd be eight forty for that?
And that way, high schoolers tend to watch their elementary symbols and we didn't. And stick them on the bus.
How do you get the, I mean, that's only a ten minute scenario, or sincere?
It only takes ten minutes, you know, high school to.
I'm just going to base on that, since that's my best case scenario is for that.
Well, we're trying, that is true.
Yeah, we're using them to get it, yes.
Right, no, I get it, but that's how it's been years before the first time it has changed. Because I have that and it's taped to my desk still to this day, and we never had a problem.
I'll say from the building, from this side, not to, like, sit down, I'd sit down at the elementary principal, that the time we're at, came to try to get away from us at forty five. They felt it was too early, that was a different.
Kids are, young kids, you know, over.
Yeah. My daycare is in high school. This is, this is the concern here. And so right now, we've got daylight saving. But this is January here, so here's, right, doesn't get light until seven forty seven. If they went football on daylight savings, which I don't know, then they won't have their concession. We have done this for years, but this is the one thing that when I first arrived and when I left, my first tour to the district. And Kelly and I advocated very strongly, we don't want our kids to be elementary level waiting at the bus stop at seven forty five, which would be earlier, six thirty.
And I get down, you know, parent.
So what we wouldn't, what we were trying to avoid is that standing in the dark. If the community thinks, no, it's fine and the board feels like that's fine, then I come forward with it. But this, I want to pull this up so you guys can see the times. And look right down there, that we do the time of day, right, off the person, so that's February.
My six being right or in the dark, definitely.
I would say almost everybody's in the dark if they're actually waiting for the bus.
Exactly.
I'm in the dark if I'm driving.
But by the time they're waiting for the bus, because we live close, like, I'm already late for work and I had to leave and they're on the bus or on the side or by themselves. I would prefer them at least get on the bus before I've left, like, I can watch you and be able to catch me. And then I know my kids are, at least they're on the bus.
Seven forty five is probably easier for the commuting parent than it appears.
I I I really know because Kelly said, if I need to sit with the kids or whatever they're gonna get.
And it's the young ones you sit with and it's the young ones that's easier to adjust. You can adjust the sleep schedule for a child that's in elementary school. This is bedtime, put them in, but high school, try to adjust their sleep time.
Well, and I have one that you can't adjust at all and I have another that's like up at six forty five and like, where's my backpack? So, I mean, it depends on the kid.
That depends on the mom. I just feel like, you know, one of the things that we'll let touch when we discuss this, it's in the spring, because we've all discussed the whole year. And we forget about how dark it is in December, January, February. And that you guys think of picked up at eight fifty time and somebody's still standing in the dark while they're out of Kanan Road or whatever, right? Waiting for the bus, yeah. So if you know, if we're gonna have dark, then I will be doing unless we don't start till ten o'clock every day, so, yeah. Anyway, so I I would rather that the parents were actually with their kids, trumping them off almost than. But you get them there and to worry about the middle schoolers and the high schools in the dark, standing on the floor. Go ahead, Lucy.
Well, just speaking on like, yeah, it will be dark, but like Kelly was saying, if it's an earlier start time for elementary. The parents, like, even on Kanan Road, if it's an hour, like, they're waiting out there for, like, a lot earlier. Because that means the parent is, it's that much easier that I can put out there with the kid. Because it's way before they have to leave. I don't know, I I mean, my mom had to leave us, it was me and my two brothers and you were. Like, uh, nine, ten and. Six or seven. And we'd have to stand out in the dark by ourselves and she she would have to leave us the long of her house. But like, and she didn't prefer to do that, but it was just something that had to be done. And honestly, like, for me, I know as parents, like, for you guys, it's a lot different, like, you're thinking about all the things. But as a kid, like, I was just chilling, I was not like that, never really crossed my mind, like, the dangers. And so, I don't know, I think. I I just think if it's early for the elementary scores, the parents have a better chance of seeing their kid get on the bus. Than if they have it later, so they're in the way and yet. They're just there by themselves, so.
So, back in ancient times, at the three twenty schedule, uh, if you look at it during football season, you're gonna miss maybe five days. For travel and not even that because one of them's gonna be local. So, like, these free travel days at max. In basketball, that's not too bad. Baseball is where the real problem came because they would get rainouts and for some reason they thought they needed to kind of double header schedule. So they could get more games in, which is just an idiot thing as far as I'm concerned. But then you would see the kids gone for the entire game. And it didn't matter what time you got out of school because they were playing the double header makeup schedule for rain and then played every game they could and they were all awake because the deal was wet. So, uh, I'm not sure that the three twenty was that big a challenge for my classes. I can't speak for all the teachers because my classes were at concession. But that's. A lot of the athletes, second semester, if they were gonna be in baseball or track, chose to be either last period of the day. And we had, we had that worked into this schedule so that they could actually have a a PE class. That was at that time and it was run by the coaches and everybody understood, you know, that you're still present when you come to the game. So, that was part of that side of it. For the elementary, certainly, I'm able to watch them below me, there's a bus stop right below my house. And sometimes there's parents there, it's a tourist street light, but uh, yes, the elementary, I, therefore, when I, when I first realized what was happening. I first moved into that house, I didn't pay attention to these school kids and all of a sudden, like, how you guys are out there really? But uh, see if they're all there on the gangway for the class and uh, very often, parents would sit in a car there and uh, the kids. And the kids did, for whatever reason, they wanted to stand out in the regular day space. But uh, that seemed like a pretty normal activity and and uh, for our grandchildren, they they seem to have that very well, so. I don't know, this this may be a, it certainly solves some of the problems for after school care. They can arrive at daycare at three o'clock, that's provides a lot of.
On the same side, we actually actually count on my dad, he can, he can.
Oh, I I don't know, I. I had to speak out of both sides of my mouth because I I don't do a lot of schedule problems. But it seems to be the one that that worked for a period of time.
Well, also, everyone's talking about, like, for the high school, the gains and the bumps and that. Also because we were having, what was it, like, six periods in a day rather than four? And so now, we miss maybe. This is speaking on behalf of like a volleyball tennis player, tennis, we feel a little bothered. But even then, we maybe miss one class period. And now we maybe miss one class period and a little bit off from the other, but even then, it was still like, we aren't missing much.
With the with the on schedule, I, because it's all for that day, so the next week, you're not gonna miss that.
Yeah.
The reality of it is, you have finite resources. So there's not gonna be a perfect schedule, we can build a perfect schedule if we had that limited resources. We don't have that, so we're not having a perfect schedule, we gotta take a look and decide, this is the best. If here are the trade offs of what we're thinking, um, and if this is the one that everyone thinks works, it's easy to call it a lack.
Even like taking on my bias of wanting a later start time, like, I just, I've always thought why, like, I mean, I know why we didn't keep it. Because of different situations, but looking at that, I really wish we did keep it because it optimized bus driving. And sleep schedules. And then now with our new block schedule for the high school, it optimizes school schedules.
Well, the other thing about the Brenda one schedule there is that it allows for the early morning jazz band class or whatever if they want to do it. I'm insane with six thirty in the morning, I mean, that's just nuts. I mean, you're on a basketball team or wherever, you're traveling, you get home at one o'clock, you've got to be back at school or you don't get to play the next day at six thirty. That's just, that's just crazy.
That was my zero period sophomore years, I would be there before seven in the morning, workout, have another workout later in the day, go do sports and save the same thing.
Alright, you guys, gymnastics practice from six to eight, so the darn rest of us, they have the math center school, but I'm not telling that for anybody here.
Yeah, but if it's school, sorry, it's seven, six, seven forty five, then it wouldn't be from six to eight for practice gymnastics, I mean, from from five to seven.
I know.
We could uh, a moment, uh, each uh, board member take two to five minutes if they want. So every voice is heard on the Brenda, okay, I'll find a few here, and the Brenda, Brenda one.
She would be higher.
Can I say one thing though, before you do, it's the only thing I want to say is that I I do want to thank everybody for the different time periods we've all tried. Between COVID changing a lot of people's worlds first and then going back and having elementary parents that honestly had no idea how it worked before. Now they're there and they're thinking that they got it right this year, tell me switch it another year. I think everybody has no idea what works and what doesn't anymore anyway, but I know that every family's different. No matter how hard we try to make sure that daycare is lined up in the afternoon or the morning, there's the other group that needed it the opposite way. So you're not gonna win no matter what we all do, but I just appreciate the fact that you guys have been so ready about working with us. That you can come to me, have some point, a tree to fall down and stuff like that, so I, but anyways, but thank you very much for saying you guys have done and kept up with us, so, thank you.
So, Melanie, you want to add, give us your thoughts on Brenda one?
Well, I'm right, Brenda. I do whatever anybody tells me.
Lots of them do well.
Yes, I'm kind of looking at a lot of these other schools and they're going at three thirty, three thirty five getting out. That seems to be a pretty common number, so I don't see that as a major hardship for us to do that. You could adjust it a few minutes and just keep the ratio the same. If you wanted to get out at three thirty, if we were ready by ten minutes, but I would see a real value in that, I think, to help the parents. And to, I hope, the daycares and to help the high school kids, I think the Brenda one is just about more even.
My main concern is that we do not have after school daycare and that's one more hour that our elementary school gets to be as well. Um, I prefer to at least, like, I don't understand why we weren't, like, that's one of the ten minute difference. Why we're right now running a fleet that we get right in time. And even middle school, the high school, over here is at least twenty minutes, I don't, I just don't see that as possible. But even if we just kind of kept the same and shorted up, we could be doing seven fifty five to eight fifty five. Which would at least be, that's still a move and accommodating, um, in our elementary in school rather than home.
I think one of the things that uh, Michelle brought up, correct me, with having elementary kind of on their own by themselves. We often have high school, new schools, kids in after school activities and so it's not as heavy of after school.
And that was true, we transport way more elementary kids than we do preschool. In college.
So when we mix some stuff like that.
Class given for elementary and middle, we're together, it was great, and that elementary students off for years of the middle school.
And that would be the reason why we run late to the middle schools, really have to get some.
We're just gonna hear the same argument, like, right now. About one, so the middle school eight thirty, but right now they're starting later, like, my kids are playing outdoor right now, I think that's true. You know, right, because they went right to the floor and got picked up and it was off.
I don't want kids in school.
But that's middle school and so then my high school or my elementary would have been home for four hours, you know. Or three until an adult dropped there, so it like works that way. But we're just, we're at the county saying that we are a childcare desert and so we really need to consider that, let's be as a district charter manager.
Or say the whole city is a desert.
The one positive, I guess, you do have that grant, the ninth century grant, who started a practice, student school program at Hollywood City. This, this last year, um, whose part has been going, adding to that and added the budget. We are expanding the after school care and transportation, who doesn't solve their problem with that. I could, Kelly, I'm giving, I'm gonna give you a Kelly two up here. Yeah, we'll move elementary to seven fifty five, what do you thought?
No, just keeping the same, so high school would be seven fifty five, elementary would be eight twenty, middle school would be eight fifty five. Again, according to what we have and what scenario.
It doesn't mean one to do. It doesn't mean one to do.
Because she's got eight fifty.
So Kelly, what was elementary going to have, sorry?
Eight twenty, yes.
How was this? Okay, what was?
Eight fifty-five. And seven, seven fifty-five.
Eight thirty-five or fifty-five?
Fifty-five. It's not having to have thirty-five minutes between elementary and middle.
And this is, to clarify, this is PM relationships. The more, the more, like, the lineage, the time differences of the trade. Even less students off for breakfast and then turn around, start the second tranche. So I clarify with Michelle that these are the PM relationships.
Good. They are in line with what they would be required for PM care.
Yeah. Kind of to suit enough those bars together are the groups riding together.
I was going to say, I might correct me if I'm wrong, but that doesn't work for any two groups to be together on the bus unless the bus is sitting somewhere. There's too much time in between all three.
It's too much time sitting with one student.
Somebody's sitting on the bus whether it's elementary or Chappity.
It's way tighter than it is right now currently. Currently, we're doing the seven forty-five to nine o'clock.
Yeah, but they drop off to the high school, they go straight to the elementary and they're able to drop off right at that point or any by the time they get there. This allows almost twenty-five minutes in between.
Should be a high school kids on the elementary, on the high school bus, that is a good.
Correct.
I'm honestly just following this one and made it tighter. So the thing we're currently doing and I just made it tighter.
At eight, seven thirty and seven forty-two.
We drive, we drive to school right now at seven twenty. We get to the elementaries at seven thirty, so then you go in an hour.
Even though they don't start till eight thirty?
Sure.
That one's wrong.
Yeah, that one's wrong.
It was eight at two thirty. All right, the other class, Kelly?
I don't know. I just think we've winged around again. We're going to hear the whole other crowded yelling and our main concerns are what were stated in that survey, which I did not take myself. I wanted to see what they said. But their concerns of the children being home alone, which doesn't put them in that scenario. And the darkness. So just, we asked the question, we should make sure that we're hitting up what they're asking for. Really helping that out.
Do you see one of your thoughts? The initial questions, right? Random one, but obviously I'll go on Kelly one or Kelly two.
Yeah, um, for the random one, I'm just looking at that and it just, it seems to be the least like spread out for sure, but it also gives ample time between at the end. So that way it's not pretty much a kid left by us like all along. And then I do like that up in the county too, that the elementary starts a little bit later. But then that also, like, kids will still be sitting in the dark for a little bit depending on where they're at. And at that point, parents will have to leave their, move their kids. So it's like, I don't know. For me, it seems to be the best option.
I, you know, you got a transportation expert. You guys are. And I tend to, does, uh, all day. I like the random one. It works. It's working the fast. Like, I agree with it. I know we won't be able to make everybody happy no matter what you do, somebody's not going to be happy. We got to go and work fast for it. I would love to have other buses, everybody starting to stop at the same time. So it's just not financially feasible. So I like, I like the random one. So this is my two cents.
So Kelly's points about making sure that we're trying to, you know, pay the things that people ask for. The old one truly addresses that issue. Because it's the older kids, parent of the day, not so late that it's just out of, out of whack. As a commuter, having to drive to Portland, to tell you that the seven forty-five around, my students would have been better. That later starts would have never been able to get that child ready and spare away. Now they're working overtime and here it comes. Again, the problems of what the concerns about after school thing. Kind of been a weird space where I grew up here. I didn't have this schedule. I grew up in a place where I'd be on a bus for an hour and then I had to sit somewhere for another hour and then I could get home. And then I'm sixty miles away from the daycare. So, I mean, the reality of life is that sometimes we choose places to live and there are some problems with that. So I think from my perspective, the one that makes the most sense to get the number one sleep schedule that's popular. Live in an area that the daylight hours, I don't care what time they change it, it's not going to fix that particular problem. That's geographic issue. We live in an area where if it just gets dark, it's far past. So I think the one that fixes it is the random one as far as that goes. All right, I already said my piece, but I think that the random one is probably the way to roll. And one of the things that we haven't talked about a lot, that random one allows for the most elementary prep time. And that's a contractual issue and it's a real fight to give them hours in a day because they can't just take an hour out of the high school camp with the schedule. And, and I think that the random one probably lends itself best to that.
Is that contracted for an elementary teacher most likely a seven thirty to three thirty?
Yeah, you should.
Seven thirty to three thirty, eight to four, eight to four.
I do have a question on the one right now. Is that, is that actually enough time? Maybe twenty-three, you have to get back around and get everybody to get back?
It is because the way I'll route it, it'll make it that way. So I have to totally change routes to make it fit for this one. Where some routes wasn't going out to North. This one where I'll have one bus go out to like Pittsburgh Motor Careman and just pick up elementary while the other buses to get high school and full school. So it doesn't complement that.
I didn't remember we used to have, Homestead City and Yankton were about ten minutes earlier, so you could turn those buses around and go back. And so when we brought them all together at the same time, that had to have sort of been a little bit of a curve, is to get back out there and get the next group. So that was part of the reason I'm asking is making sure that we, if nothing else, don't need to have our Homestead Cities there earlier to even pull that off. So you're okay?
Yeah.
I'm double back. Yes, and efforts are currently, you know, is, you know, the big concern up going to the high school and then probably that off of the elementary school.
Yeah, but by doing it ten minutes earlier because gave them a little more time to pull off the loop on the second turn, right?
Yeah. So Chairman Kelly, who specializes?
Well, I mean, at this point, I wasn't sure how parents were going to handle the earlier time at the elementary level. But I have to tell you, except for a couple of last mornings, in general, the parents are so much more stress. They're dropping their kids off and they're either heading straight for work and now they're not having to worry about that. They're also digging to go work at at the eight, eight thirty time instead of almost nine, like they were. Which meant that they worked so late in the afternoon, they weren't even getting back for the kids advance or things like that. So that part of it, I also believe the time period between elementary and the middle school helps a lot. If you're on the McBride side, the rest of them can get there and drop their middle schooler off at time. I can't believe how long it takes for McBride following cars and the buses picking up the kids going down Homestead Boulevard. If you don't give them at least twenty minutes to be tuned, they can't even get there. And their kids are the ones that are late all the time. Is the McBride kids because they couldn't get here. So the parents were kind of being cranky last year. And they're like, I'm going to get out of here because my kids have been delayed at the middle school. And they are so much more relaxed this year. Or else they're on a bus depending on anything. Way less stress.
Forty-five minutes right now.
Yeah, there's a lot more time to kids. But that's given them enough too. It's with Brandon's schedule to be able to get from McBride over there, not be late in their middle school. Will your workers stay working for you if we get home on that? Okay.
I just want to clarify, it sounds like, are you, just the board, I mean. Like, I think Durham is hearing, like, a second, we're reading buses.
I'd love to hear how they hate school and the elementary, make sure that they're okay with it and have opportunity to have any prepared with that.
I don't think the drive process, I guess, they don't need to know with the driver and the. It's definitely work, probably scope into a solution that doesn't involve the mixed hand. I.
Yes, I was sitting, you gave us the process notes. This is the time to have this conversation. Do we do it like a board policy and do, create to publish it or to do a comment? I, I don't believe that there needs to be a board action or go on a schedule. But if the board wants it, do that. And that's fine as well. Because to me, that's, that's, you know, so I like that we have it both.
Solicited feedback.
And at this time, aren't we, I guess, we're all in the same big business. Are we looking at trying this in any kind of issue or this is not until September?
This would not be a pill September pending.
Oh, shit.
Yes, if you do, you'll allow to reroute all these routes again.
Yeah, I'll give you six months.
The demographics in the community has changed enough that that's going to be significant or not changing anyway, but it's good to know this before.
Right.
I can't imagine trying to, because the high school's already redoing our.
I know, plus everything has changed. Just adding in an apartment complex, it's a lot of things, right?
Did I tell you about the nine hundred unit empty?
No, you didn't.
So we solicited feedback after changing last year without, I think, soliciting feedback or we solicited feedback, we did it in broad basis. In the way that we did, to just clarify, we did panels, we had people talking about this process. Significant outcry, we solicited the feedback because of that, with the recognition that we wanted to have a little boss conversation. So this is what I get to, and I used to put forward and say, this is what has been done before. After having some discussions and trying this schedule this year to do, you know, it should be put forward in community, this is what we propose. Come back to, I think it needs to be a very short time for.
Yeah, I, I do think there's some value in the Kelly two. Benefit that random one has is maybe the parents have that schedule. And so they may not be super excited about it, but we hear, you know, like we hear all the time, good enough for me, it's good enough for my kid. Although for me, I don't want things to be good enough for my kids. I'll do better for my kids, so.
I just looked at High Hill District, they have the same schedule, like, five years later.
I can't remember what time I had to be there anymore. I just remember it being dark during part of the year and it's really dark. Okay, that's all.
Not to throw more like concerns or whatever cases as far as the like travel stuff or anything, and I know what it do us with that conversation. If you're concerned about sports, you're surprising, your sports issue goes away.
Oh, not every, not every, it's not just football. We have sports throughout the week, so that's not.
So there's. Not all of it, the basketball is two nights a week.
And then taking every day.
Baseball is every day of the week as soon as it rains.
I'm still asking about baseball. I think baseball should just be a summer sport a bit bigger.
Scott, can you, is the twenty-first century grant makes sixty, is it sixty spots per school? How many per school? So sixty, sixty spots at each elementary school. Twenty-first century.
And I know that's one of the topics, just that I think if we can figure out how to keep supporting that program, makes all of these things work. And then it goes, no matter what child it is, if they have that place to go, they can get anywhere. Stupidland and I are not here for that, so we have no last word.
You can land, I can't remember.
The staff is going to get tired of keeping.
I don't know, like, so.
Well, I think that we've given pretty much general direction. If it sounds like this, it's, that's, it's, we'll figure out a way to push this out.
Scott, you mind if I just throw my two cents in here?
Sure.
I understand Kelly's points there. I do. Brenda's option, adding a bus. Okay, so specifically responsible for you, and you can get them, but you're looking, like Will said, nine to twelve months, that's very out of business. And it's probably February or March of twenty twenty-five before you see your first bus. We have the drivers long before the buses and that's very rare. So, but the buses would be an issue. Brenda's, you can sell it as, we're not adding any expense, we're not adding any capital and it's going to stay at the number of routes it is right now. Your neighbors to the south in the People's Republic of California did this a couple of years ago. And they gave the school district two years to implement it and it is awful. And they didn't like it, parents didn't like it, but they did have to. So, but surprising or.
Right, yeah.
I can't see it.
Right.
Not everybody's going to like this. And you're never going to make everybody happy. But, and like you said, I think it's got some of the parents who are already done through Brenda's schedule, so it might be easier to swallow that. Well, for the people of this table, why don't you scroll on the random one? Or that, I think. I'm the only one that didn't make it.
Or the type you can do more.
When I count, it's going there too, I guess.
I never rode the bus though. It was a walk for you.
Good, that was good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys coming in.
Drive careful going home.
Brenda, that's.
There's no ice out there. For one more, two more nights, you can do.
I did, I did. I have all four schedules on my desk tape, so I know.
Just.
Thank you for all the.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming out.
All right, well, then I guess we'll go on to, wait, did you have anything else?
No, we have shifted to, uh, on the.
Okay, let's check.
Unless they have it on the.
All right, so we'll go on to six point oh, we're going to address the board and this is for fellow comments on the end.
There were class three.
We just left the ones we left. All right, so then we'll go on to seven point oh, we have ten items. And the first one is seven point nine is to approve the twenty twenty-four budget committee calendar.
Yeah. So the last thing that I saw on, I like the yellow, but I also.
To be wrong, but no, we have to, we have to move it in seconds.
I thought we were going to discuss what we are. We have to. I'll move that we approved twenty twenty-four budget committee calendar.
What's that mean?
Move from second to the twenty twenty-four budget committee calendar. We just got it.
Yeah.
So my question was completely different from that. Is there a reason why our. Is there a reason why our, some of what we've done in the past, our budget committee members like Cole could be on the committee and, and assume or has he established presidency outside of the district?
Um, he, he, I think stated he intended to lease her for a year, okay, he took the position. So if he is still in district resident, maybe he just wants to reclarify.
But we, you, you were.
Last spring.
That's what they.
I mean, just, like, if they were interested because they're, now they know the nature of what they're doing. Would that show meetings? Yeah. Definitely something that would, um, that.
All right.
Maybe, maybe not, but maybe it would be a favorite question.
If you want.
It's still, yes.
I'm sorry, did you guys pick a calendar? Or we just.
So we said, you know, we're having a conversation there.
Calendar and.
Yes.
Other ones. Oh, okay.
We'll just start the calendar.
Okay, because, um, if you, to that point, Bill, if you want to not ask off the budget committee vacancies, I can visit, I can revisit without students and see if I misunderstood.
There's still a thing, so.
Yeah, we still have a leave one over.
Yeah, we can wait another, maybe. Yeah, and to, like, technically the board can appoint, like, we've just taken an application process in case there were.
Lots of people that I continue every single year advocate for.
Yes.
So I did, just starting on May fifteenth, and May twenty-ninth, I've been going, going with the later schedule, maybe. Does that give us more insight to what might be financially available to us? Uh, legislatively and things that maybe do us better. Well, I haven't done some bargaining, well, I've done some things hopefully. You know, if there's something, you, having a little more time to finalize your budget might give you more insight. Or is it better to go early and just get it, talk down to this?
From the standpoint of coordinating the budget, um, I can say personally, the May fifteenth is preferred because we are negotiating with all groups this year. The way in which the transportation discussion happened, that kind of helped take a rock off the table. But I also realize May fifteenth is an age meaning, so things feel late. We're in the second year of the legislative budget, so we know our allocation. So it's very unlikely that revenue estimate will change, but the payroll and the later we can get a better understanding of getting fund balance, I think fund balance. That's always appreciated. And I know HR would be, uh, he wants to approach work to a principle and doing staffing a little differently. And this would give that process a little bit. But we could do a May first if.
No, I don't.
Or a May.
I think if it provides us some, uh, providing advantage that matters for the ultimate. Is two weeks enough time for the. Recognizing they're very, very delayed. But one gives more sunshine. Gives it's a regular. There are, there are possibilities to shift the jet effect to the, we might have needed. I, I just think that every year we have an administrative conference. I definitely don't go exactly to have, or leaders that are there every day.
Now, the Wednesday, what are two talks? This is, it's acting upon the budget committee's recommendations, because rarely any change. Biggest thing about budget hearing is the need for the ten days of budget hearing. So, so the calendar, we either need to move everything up two weeks, which again.
Not this, this is, I just, I would ask for, for talking about. And if I had the need there, I could.
So, so now we're moving to the. All right, are we, any other discussion on that one?
Sorry, for mentioning that.
Yeah.
Well, what would you do?
Does that help to tell me sure? Okay. All right. So then on the seventh question, then, then we can second to, then that's up to nine. All those in favor say aye. Seven point two, declare budget committee date. One, please.
Seven point two, sorry, budget committee date.
I move the second to accept that to another seven point two, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Question, Karen. And seven point three, to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, number eight, is the closure of in-roads associated student body accounts. Also, yeah. So it's when we've been seconded to accept that to item seven point three, to closure of the in-roads associated student body accounts. All those opposed, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Question, Karen. Well, on to eight point oh, upcoming meeting, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, right recording. And on this one, it's my, your local service partner, are they gonna be here?
Yep.
Yes. So we, for eight person, we don't. It'll be over by then. That's all right. Okay, anything else?
I'm not being carried out.
And the twenty, the twenty-seventeenth, finding session is canceled.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Christie sent it out that.
We got it, we did, we did, and we didn't. Anything else? All right. Media.